Okay, good evening everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I can have a roll call, please.
President McGinley.
Here.
Trustee Enright.
Here.
Trustee Fosulis.
Here.
Trustee Kenwood.
Here.
Trustee LaPlatasec.
Here.
Trustee Pride.
Here.
Trustee Senek.
Here.
Thank you. We are going to move into audience participation. First up, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week 2017.
Whereas the public service provided to our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees who are responsible for the abundant supply of good quality drinking water, excellent wastewater treatment facilities, an extensive local road system, and an award-winning forestry program, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of the public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, forestry, and snow removal, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, construction, operation, and maintenance are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of qualified and dedicated personnel. Now therefore, on behalf of Diane McGinley, President of the Village of Glenellen, do proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, National Public Works Week in the Village of Glenellen, and call upon all citizens to recognize the contributions which public work, staff, and officials make to our community.
Thank you. And our Public Works Director Julius Hansen will accept the award. Next is a proclamation to acknowledge Emergency Medical Services Week 2017.
Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, whereas the member of the emergency medical services teams with a career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services provided by Designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, on behalf of Diane McGinley, President of the Village of Glenellen, Illinois, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Service Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you. And Fire Chief Clark is here to accept the award. Next, we have Community Service Officer Rick Perez has been selected as Life Well-Run Community Hero by the International City Council -- oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one, didn't I? My apologies. Police Chief Norton and the Madden family will present the Madden Scholarship winners. The scholarship was established in memory of Robert "Bob" Madden, a Glenellen police surgeon, who enjoyed a 28-year career with the police department before succumbing to ALS on May 22nd, 2017. Chief Norton.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to the safest place in America. Madam President, members of the Village Board and guests, I'm honored to be before you tonight to present the Robert F. Madden Scholarship awards. Tonight, we will award our 10th Annual Madden Scholarship, and poignantly, tonight is also the 10th anniversary of Bob Madden's passing. For those of you who didn't know him, Bob Madden, or Bob, who had acquired the nickname Mad Dog, or Doggy for short, was hired by the Glenellen Police Department in July 1977. He was promoted to Sergeant December 14th in 1991. He was a beloved member of the police department, known for a quick wit and a win-win approach to most issues. Ever mindful of the importance of fitness, he often rode his bike to work and played basketball here at the Civic Center every week. In late 1998, Bob was diagnosed with amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, or ALS, what is more commonly referred to as Lou Gehrig's disease. For those of you unfamiliar with this terrible disease, diagnosis typically takes about one year after exhaustive testing, eliminates all other potential illnesses that present similar symptoms. This very invasive and painful diagnostic process takes about a year. After his diagnosis, Bob met the challenge of this disease head-on with grace and dignity. Whereas most people diagnosed with ALS are incapacitated within three years, Bob defied medical expectations and continued to work through his illness until his retirement on St. Patrick's Day, 2006. And I might add, he refused to let his illness interfere with his job. He worked full days and was an exceed standards officer until his retirement. As mentioned, 10 years ago today, Sergeant Robert Madden passed away after battling ALS for more than eight years. Just before Bob's passing, the police department received a donation of $10,000 from a local anonymous donor for what they deemed to be excellent service over the years. We contacted the benefactor and asked if this money could be put towards a scholarship in Bob's name. The benefactor had read of Bob's passing in the paper, and liked the scholarship idea. The Village Board later approved this idea. Bob Madden served the Glenellen community for nearly 30 years, and his three children, of whom he was so very proud, all graduated from Glenbard South. Bob met his wife Bowie at Western Illinois University, where he graduated with a degree in Criminal Justice Administration. Therefore, the scholarship committee designed the award to be given to a student from either Glenbard West or Glenbard South who showed an interest in a law enforcement-related field. Originally, the scholarship was a single $500 award. However, this year, we will be awarding $3,000 in scholarships. This is possible mainly due to the fundraising efforts of the Madden family. In an exciting twist this year, Fire &amp; Wine Restaurant in Glenellen approached the police department and fire company recently about a fundraiser to celebrate their 5th anniversary in town. On June 11th, write this down everyone, on June 11th, from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m., Fire &amp; Wine will host a brunch with an auction. The proceeds for the police department half of this will go towards the Madden Scholarship. There are a limited number of tickets at $25, and they will be available online. As a matter of fact, once we started this endeavor, Bowie Madden has helped with the planning process for the Fire &amp; Wine fundraiser. Without further ado, if Bob's wife Bowie would join me to present the scholarship awards. First, from Glenbard South, Alex Kuhn is here with his mom and dad, Kate and Jeff, and his brother Josh, her brother Josh, I'm sorry. You know, there were two Alexases. There was an Alex and an Alexis here. Screwed me up a couple of times. Also from Glenbard South but unable to be here tonight is Alexis Andres. She couldn't be with us. From Glenbard West, Jack Cranny, accompanied by his mom and dad, Sandy and Bill, and his sister Kaylee. And finally, Elise Prickett, accompanied by her mom and dad, Kim and Dave. A round of applause for our scholarship. Finally, in addition to the generous initial donation, the Madden family organizes fundraisers each year and is active in several causes to raise money to fight ALS. One of Bob's daughters, Sarah, actually works for MDA. Recently, an ALS event at the Park West in Chicago raised almost $190,000 for research, bringing that event's 10-year total to over $1 million. There is also an annual golf outing that the Madden family is sponsors and directly benefits a scholarship fund. I think last year's proceeds were over $8,000. Here tonight, on behalf of the Madden family, and this is one of my favorite parts of tonight, you're gonna have to bear with me, we have Bob's brother Mark, his wife Rose, daughters Maggie, son Dan, or wife Maggie's, is that Maggie's husband, Dan? There we go. You know, you'll understand in a minute when I get through all these how there can be some confusion. Daughter Sarah, daughter Sean, with her husband David, and their daughters Riley and Shannon, Bob's grandchildren. His Bowie's brother Henry, Bob's brother Karen, Bob's brother-in-law Pat Kenny, Fire Chief. I just saw Pat a minute ago. There you are. He keeps moving around. His son Brendan, Bob's sister Donna, and his brother Michael. So when we're all done, this room is virtually going to be empty when we're done with the riggler. And that concludes my presentation on the scholarship. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you Madden family. It is always a privilege to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So now we will be moving on to -- oh.
One more.
Now we will be moving on to Community Service Officer Rick Perez, who's been selected as a Life Well-Run Community Hero by the International City County Management Association for his work ethic, dedication to the village, and overall service to the residents and business community. Chief Norton.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm here tonight on behalf of Manager Franz and the ICMA Initiative called Life Well-Run, who has recognized Rick Perez as their community hero. And I'm going to read what they wrote, a brief synopsis. "It's not too often that the parking enforcer," which is kind of what we should call him now, I think, instead of, "but the parking enforcer is considered one of the most helpful and friendliest of police officers. But this hero uses his institutional knowledge, friendly approach, and great attitude to win them over. As a community service officer, one of Rick's many responsibilities is to lead parking enforcement efforts. Every day, he ensures that all regulations are met and educates those who may be unaware of parking issues or requirements. Through all types of weather conditions, Rick helps commuters and residents with a smooth flow of traffic and parking locations in the village's busiest and most congested areas. Rick walks the thin line between the needs of businesses, business owners in the central business district, and those of commuters, residents, and shoppers. He sees this as an opportunity for partnership between business owners and the municipality. Rick has the autonomy to directly communicate with businesses and to collaboratively address issues and make improvements, or to provide educational opportunity to all stakeholders." In addition to that, this is also Rick's 30th anniversary with the police department. April was his, he marked 30 years. And I've often joked that when he goes, we either have to hire five or six people to replace him, or I'm leaving too. He really is an incredible resource for the police department. His friendly approach, the way he deals with people, he takes an awful lot of grief from people, but those people he takes grief from are parking illegally and just don't like the consequences sometimes. I recall that several years ago, there was a parking study. We could, the village commissioned a parking study, and one of the findings of the parking study was in fact that parking shouldn't work in Glenellen the way we're laid out, but because of the parking enforcement efforts of Rick Perez, it seems to, which is a tribute to his work here and what he's done for the last 30 years. We won't go into how many tickets we think he's written in the 30 years, or what the revenue that's generated, because it'd just make everyone kind of cry a little bit. But joining Rick tonight is his mother Pat, and his brother Chris, and his sister Stephanie. And I, who, are you going to read the certificate? President McGinley? Thank you.
Absolutely. Life Well-Run Community Hero designation. This certificate is awarded to Rick Perez, Glenellen, Illinois, in recognition of your dedication to creating a life well-run.
Congratulations. Another 30 to go.
The village would like to recognize the extraordinary efforts of Officer Kevin Riggle for saving the life of a woman when he rescued her from her submerged car in a pond located on the east side of College of DuPage property, as well as recognize the efforts of all other agencies involved, the College of DuPage, the Glenellen Volunteer Fire Company, the Lisle Woodridge Fire District, and DUCOM for their assistance on this matter. Chief Norton.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the Village Board. We welcome members of the Glenellen Volunteer Fire Company. Chief Clark is here, which is a nice surprise, I didn't know you were gonna be here. Members of the Lisle Woodridge Fire Department, Protection District, I'm sorry, and representatives from College of DuPage, all of whom were present on the scene that night of March 24th, 2017. Again, I am honored to be before you tonight to recognize and celebrate yet another outstanding achievement and valorous effort by one of our Glenellen police officers. In my 30 years with the village, I have witnessed great acts of heroism. Collectively, the Glenellen Police Department has rescued children from terrible fires, saved drowning babies and children, prevented the murder of a one-year-old, stopped armed robberies and progress, resuscitated countless lives of both adults and children, and day in and day out, while others run to safety, we run towards the sound of danger. Tonight, we have yet another story of courage and heroism to boast about. March 24th, 2017 was actually a record-setting day for heat. I don't know if you remember that or not. The temperature reached 82 degrees that day. However, as is typical in the Midwest, by 8 o'clock at night, it had dropped into the lower 40s, and the drop in temperature was accompanied by a cold rain. At 7:51 p.m., DUCOM dispatched what is called "an assist to other agency." Over our channel, the College of DuPage was responding to a car in the water in the Curves at Faywell Boulevard. A witness driving by observed what she thought was a car in the water partially submerged. By the time she had turned around, the car was fully submerged, and she did not see anyone exit the vehicle. The actual notes on the dispatch ticket read, "Car in the water, person can be seen in the water, but they are not moving." Glenellen police officers Kevin Riggle and Joe Flores arrived, and Riggle immediately began removing his gear and giving it to Flores for safekeeping. Officer Riggle, thinking only of others, then jumped into the icy water and swam about 100 feet to get to the car. When he got there, he observed a woman's head underwater with just her forehead and hair above the waterline. He managed to pull her fully from the submerged vehicle by himself to the relative safety on top of the car, which itself was about eight inches underwater. In doing so, the woman regained consciousness. He then attempted to keep them both as warm as possible as they awaited the specially-equipped water rescue team from Lisle Woodridge. Both were taken to local hospitals. Upon his release from Good Samaritan Hospital later that night, Officer Kevin Riggle insisted on returning to duty, but had one request. He asked if he could go to Central DuPage to check on the condition of the woman he saved. Kevin was hired by the Glenellen Police Department on April 7th, 2011. In August of 2012, he went to Afghanistan as part of the 933rd Military Police Company Illinois Army National Guard out of Fort Sheridan, where he served during Operation Enduring Freedom until June of 2013. Incidentally, the same weekend as the rescue, which was quite a weekend, Officer Riggle helped apprehend two armed robbers of the Dunkin' Donuts on Roosevelt Road. March 24th was also the last day as a Glenellen police officer for Kevin's wife Mallory, who's here with us. Mallory left to give birth to their daughter Hannah about two weeks after both of whom, and both of whom are here tonight. Doctors are not sure if the call Kevin made to Mallory while in the back of the ambulance sped up the delivery or not. Also here to celebrate with Kevin, Mallory, and Hannah are Kevin's mother Sherry Ladislas, his father Jim Riggle, his stepmother Ann Riggle, grandmother Marjorie Bruick, grandfather Fred Bruick, father-in-law Deputy Chief Fred Schulp from the Schaumburg Fire Department -- we got a lot of firemen in here tonight -- and mother-in-law Donna Schulp. President McGinley will now read the formal certificate of valor to be presented to Jason tonight, along with a medal and campaign ribbon for his uniform.
It is my honor. Certificate of Valor presented to Kevin Riggle in recognition of your courageous efforts to save the life of an unconscious woman from a car fully submerged in frigid pond water on Friday, March 24th, 2017. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Kevin, can you come back up for one second? Trustee Kenwood muddled our plans if he wants to say something.
Yes. First, really Dr. Rondo from COD would like to speak.
So I would like to also say what a great evening it is for the many women in blue of Glenellen, what a great evening it is for all of you. President and Village Manager Franz, thank you for your comments and for your leadership, and thank you for allowing me and the opportunity to speak here this evening on behalf of College of DuPage. First off of, on behalf of the entire college community, I would like to congratulate you, President, for your assumption of the office of the village president and leadership. We know that you're gonna do a great job, and we all look forward to working with you and the entire Glenellen leadership in a very collaborative and productive way, and it is wonderful to be able to be here this evening with our leadership to affirm our partnership. I would also like to take notice of the leadership here from the college. I've not been here for a couple of days. And so when I found out that we were gonna have so many of our leaders coming forth this evening, they were doing so voluntarily. And the chairman of our Board of Trustees, Diane Mazaki, is here this evening, Chairman. We also have our Deputy Chief Jim Nels of the College Police Department, Director Ray Cordell, the director of our SELEA, our academy, and we have our Vice President for HR, our Director for Homeland Security, our Vice President for Student Affairs, our Counselor, and our Government Relations Director, and they're all here to affirm what we believe is a great partnership with Glenellen. Thank you very much. Your presence is very gratifying to me as we stand shoulder-to-shoulder with our public partners, and Chairman, I want to thank you especially for your taking out your time. I want to now also talk about that evening of 24 March. Knowing that I have a soldier here to also honor gives me great satisfaction as well. For that night could have ended up very tragically, in a car, with a woman in a car, unconscious, and not of her own fault, on the pond at the college, and indeed, in a series of events that are almost miraculous. But the evening did not end in tragedy, thanks to the exemplary leadership and conduct of Officer Riggle and a team of first responders. At the outset, dispatchers from the college, well, from both DUCOM and the college calmly and competently directed the first responders to the scene. A college police officer was the first to arrive, immediately tried, and commenced the rescue effort. Responders from Lisle Woodridge Fire District assisted the fire departments of Glenellen, Lombard, Downers Grove, and Weaton, and also arrived quickly and rescued both the driver and the officer from the roof of the submerged vehicle. Through his prompt and expert responsiveness, those professionals helped save the rescuers and the driver from exposure to the environment. We thank each of these public servants for your dedication to duty. But most important, Officer Riggle deserves and earns our thanks for going above and beyond the call of duty. By jumping in the pond without any hesitation and swimming out to the submerged car, pulling the driver from the vehicle and moving into the roof of the vehicle, Officer Riggle quite simply saved a life. And for that, you deserve the special recognition and honor you have received this evening. At the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, there's a quote from the very famous first-century Roman senator and historian of all of the Caesars, and his name is Tacitus. And he said, "In valor, there is hope." The valor of Officer Riggle gave hope. And on behalf of the entire College of DuPage family and first responders and the community, I thank you for your bravery, your service, your courage, and your fidelity. Well done.
All right. I've got a few words to say on this. You know, when Chief Norton sent us the email, I really felt like I was reading a script from a movie or something. It was just amazing. And as a citizen, you know, and we always talk about police and fire and medical and military always go, you know, when we're running away, they run towards the problem. And this is a situation where that really occurred, and as a citizen, I was very proud of what you did. And I know that you view it as a part of your job. I know you guys take it as a part of your job, and I can respect that. But I also know it comes from character and leadership, and I'm sure that that has to do with your entire family, your parents, and the support system that you have. So I wanted to thank you for that. But then I started thinking as a board member, you know, a situation like this, are really, is our police and our squad cars really equipped for this? So I got you a couple little things here, so that in the future, when something like this happens, I got you a floaty. So that you can go out there and make it a lot easier. And that's not all. As I was reading Phil's email, and you were taking your clothes off and stuff, I said myself, gee, you know, these guys need swim trunks. They're gonna go in the water like this. So we gotta use swim trunks as well. Captain America, who, you know, obviously everyone knows was a super soldier, you're now a super cop. And then I, you know, to make you more of a superhero, t-shirt, as you were taking off your vest, I said, well, you gotta be able to put something on. And since we had the whole Dunkin' Donuts the day before, I figured you should use some pop. You can walk around the station with that, so that everyone knows. Thank you very much.
Trustee LaPlatasec also has a few comments.
I just wanted to say, you know, that I don't, across the country, law enforcement, members of the law enforcement community aren't thanked enough for what they do every day, and it gives me particular honor to have an officer from our own And it gives me a particular honor to have an officer from our own police department show such valor. So thank you all for what you do, and particularly Officer Riggle.
So I'd like to, does anyone else have any comments? I'd also like to add my thanks to you, officers, as well as all of the community's support effort and agencies that were present that night. It is a true community effort, and one that I know that we can count on to support each and every one of you here in this room and your counterparts that are currently on their job right now or waiting to take their shift. And we thank all of you, all of you standing in this room, because it is with you and your support here that we can be safe in our communities. So I appreciate it. Thank you again. Can we allow to take a brief pause, in case anyone needs to go back to their shift? Thank you all for coming.
I guess I should have offered you a stay, too.
Okay, I believe the room is cleared. So thank you. The next part of our meeting is open to the members of the public, where members of the public are welcome to speak to any item not specifically on our agenda tonight. But John, do we have anyone?
I have nobody tonight.
Great. Is anybody here in the audience wanting to speak on some, on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. Next up is the consent agenda.
The following items are considered routine business by the Village Board and will be approved in a single vote in the form listed below. Before I do so, I believe one item was being pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, we are pulling item number six. I should have asked, does anybody else need anything else pulled from the consent?
So item, item number one, May 1st, 2017, Special Village Board Meeting Minutes. Item number two, May 8th, Regular Village Board Meeting Minutes. Item number three, May 15th, Regular Village Board Workshop Minutes. Item number four, Total Expenditures, including payroll and vouchers totaling $2,130,351.98. The vouchers have been reviewed by Trustee Kenwood and myself prior to this meeting and are consistent with the village's purchasing policy. Item five, Approve the Recommendations of Village President Diane McGinley that the following appointments and reappointments for various committees be reviewed and approved. I'll detail those. Item six, again, has been removed from consent. Item seven, Resolution Number 1708, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the 2007 Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and the Village of Glen Allen for construction of a commuter parking lot and recreational trail on the DuPage Parkway, Illinois Prairie Path between Park Boulevard and Taylor Avenue, and authorizing the Village Manager to execute the amendment. Item eight, authorize the Village Manager to execute a customer work agreement with ComEd for the undergrounding of overhead electrical wires on Lake Road north of Crescent Boulevard in the amount of $30,236 to be expensed to the Capital Projects Fund. Item nine, pursuant to Section 110.7 of the Village Code, adopt the competitive bidding procedures of the Suburban Purchase Cooperative and the State of Illinois Management Services Group in conjunction with the provisions of Chapter 10, and approve the purchase of two 2017 Ford Police Pursuit Sedans from Curry Motors of Frankfurt, Illinois, in the amount of $56,530, and one 2017 Ford Police Pursuit Utility Vehicle from Landmark Ford, Inc. of Springfield, Illinois, in the amount of $31,169, all to be expensed to the Equipment Services Fund.
Are there any questions from the trustees?
I have a question on number eight.
Number eight. Okay, for Public Works, Hanson?
Actually, I can probably address.
I'm just curious, what's, is there a, is there some health and safety issue as to why we're undertaking this effort?
No, no, no public safety issue. This is a product of working with previous President Demos, and in conjunction with the Crescent Improvement Project, as well as the high school addition, that this area was identified for, it's a very short run of overhead wires, and a way to accentuate the addition of the high school project. It's an entryway to the park, and we were able to partner with not only the residents who are impacted by this, but also the high school and park district to partner together to address this issue collectively.
Is, other than what you've described, is there a benefit to the village from undertaking this effort?
Aesthetics.
Is there some reason why the aesthetics of this, the cost of that, should not be borne by those who benefit from that aesthetics, as opposed to the village as a whole?
Well, that's why there is a reimbursement process. So the rest, the three residents are paying a share of it, the high school's paying a share, the park district's paying a share, and the village's share is actually coming from a potential sale of right-of-way in that area to one of the other residents. That's going to be on a future agenda. So in essence, it's going to cost the village about $2,000 of the $30,000 expense.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I add to that, too? I mean, for, I think, decades, undergrounding wires in Glen Allen has been, you know, part of our strategic plans and trustee strategic, you know, when we go on our, you know, strategic planning retreats, it's always been a hot topic. We've had donations from, from people, I believe anonymous donations, to help underground wires. And again, with being a community with many trees, and of course, trees and wires don't work well together. So I saw this as an excellent collaboration. It's been something I've been pushing for, for years, to try to underground more wires, and it is an expensive endeavor. And, you know, if we can get into more public-private partnerships like this, you know, particularly involving, again, the residents of those park districts, school districts, and ComEd, who I think came to the table on this, it would be great to, you know, ramp this up a little bit and continue to do this more, so.
We shall try.
Adam, did you have?
I was part of the discussion in respect to.
Can you go up to the, sorry?
I just wanted to share this with Mark. I don't know that he was called.
Thank you, Adam Cruz, on behalf of the Environmental Commission. I was part of the discussion about one of the reasons why we might want to put those wires underground. And one of those reasons was to plant more trees, so that there would be better opportunity for tree cover, with the loss of some of the trees that were cut as a result of the expansion program. So there is the benefit to improve the landscaping, which we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do if the, if the wires were still present.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have one comment and item number seven. In the, in the new agreement, there was a, there's a signature location for the Chairman of the, of the county, and a signature location, I think, for Manager Franz. The prior agreement, the signature was the President of the Village and the President of the, and Chairman, it was Chairman Schillstrom at the time. But I didn't know whether or not that was a, anything needed to be addressed, whether it needed to be.
We actually looked at that, and because the board is taking this action tonight, in essence, this is to extend the agreement for five, five years, 10 years? Five years. And the Village Manager is authorized to, as long as the board approves it, to sign off on that agreement.
Okay, it's just something I caught when I was reading through it, so I wanted to make sure that we had all our i's dotted and t's crossed, so that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I had one question on number nine. Is it ever possible to buy the cars from car dealerships in Glen Allen? Are those, I mean, I have no idea if they provide.
Yes, no, that's, that is a topic that comes up fairly regularly, and we do try to get pricing from our local dealer whenever we can. And I think we did with both of these vehicles as well. And the low bid just came a little under what they were offering.
Any other questions and comments? All right, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following items, including payroll and vouchers totaling $2,130,351.98, items one through five, and items seven through nine. Pulling item six.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Ladisic?
Yes.
Trustee Pride?
Yes.
Trustee Sennec?
Aye.
Okay. You're the little aye now, Sennec.
I do it for an honor of Trustee Elliot.
All right, item number six. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? We have pulled it because Trustee Ladisic would like to recuse himself. No? Okay, can I have a?
We did have a couple. Let me go. So I read through this, and I realized that this didn't come to a workshop, but there was previous, much discussion on this. My questions were, what happens at the end of the 10 years? I realize there's a 10-year extension, or there's a 10-year time limit, but my question was, what happens at the end of 10 years? Is there a fee or a fine, or is there a mandate to tear down?
Go ahead.
Sure. John Sterrett, Village Planner. So essentially, at the end of the 10 years, that's a condition that was recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So because that is a condition, if it cannot be met at that time when the 10 years is up, or if one of those other scenarios take place and the garage cannot be taken down, then there is the option for that condition to be amended, if the petitioner were to come back to the village to seek approval of some kind of extension. Otherwise, it would be no different than any other condition that's placed on any type of approving ordinance. So there is still that option to amend the ordinance, to continue it for a certain amount of time. But other than that, the building would have to come down by the direction of the ordinance.
Any other questions?
If it doesn't, what happens?
If it doesn't, then there could be enforcement from the Planning and Development Department, requiring it to come down per that condition in the ordinance. So there would be an enforcement that the department would have based on what is contained within the ordinance. So there is that enforcement power that's, that's given to the department from the ordinance.
I take it that enforcement power is to cite the building owner for non-compliance with the ordinance?
Yeah, so it could be placed in violation, then, if it's not in keeping with one of the conditions of the ordinance.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam President, I do have a comment on this. I, I would like to review this ordinance that causes this situation to go through this strenuous process. If a resident buys a lot next to them, wants to tear down the house but keeps the garage, I think we need to review it and to make it maybe easier for the resident to do so, since it's an existing building on a lot that they may have, they own, that, you know, it's been. So I'd like to review that, and where our ordinance doesn't allow that, and not have residents who want that for their own use, they own it, have an easier process than going through a zoning board of appeal.
All right, and thank you for that. And I'm sure we can bring that back to Director Helsberg, as, and you're here. So by all means, we can definitely review it and have staff make a recommendation. Good point. Any other comments? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion for ordinance number 6503, an ordinance approving variations from the district regulations and the supplemental regulations to allow an accessory structure to remain on a lot without a principal structure in a non-conforming location on the property located at 710 Meredith Place.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Pride?
Aye.
Trustee Sennec?
Aye.
Love it, thank you.
And I, as President McGinley said, I recuse myself on the hook, so.
Thank you. Okay, item F, Annexation of the GWA Property Located at 21 West 551 Bemis Road, in 21 West 518 Bemis Road. Presented by John, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is the, an annexation for the Glenbard Wastewater Authority Treatment Plant, located at the southeast corner of Bemis Road and Sunnybrook Road, located right here within this red area. The GWA plant is contained within the red area here, coming up along the river. And then also, there is a thin part here that's located going out to Route 53. So essentially, the GWA plant is currently located within the Village of Lombard. When GWA was created, the intention was to always have GWA, this particular plant location down at Sunnybrook and Bemis, to be located with Glen Allen, located within Glen Allen. Because there wasn't contiguity with the village at the time, the property was annexed into the Village of Lombard, so that, that way, the plant could be under the jurisdiction of one of the two communities that benefits, that is served by the GWA. So up until the time when Glen Allen could become contiguous to the plant location, Lombard had jurisdiction and permitting authority over GWA. Now that Glen Allen does have contiguity to the property, we are able to annex this property. So village staff has been working with the Village of Lombard to set up an intergovernmental agreement, which was approved by the Village Board on April 10th. And then also, the, there was a petition to disconnect this property from the Village of Lombard, which was received and approved by the Village of Lombard on April 24th. So now, the disconnection doesn't go into effect until the Village of Glen Allen does actually approve the annexation of the property. So until such time, it's still technically within the Village of Lombard. Not the entire property, or the entire GWA plant is within Lombard. So as I said, this portion here that's in the red, this is currently within Lombard. There is this long skinny piece that comes out to Route 53. This actually contains an interceptor, so that's the purpose to, to this piece of land that goes to 53. This is currently unincorporated, so this is unincorporated DuPage County. And then there is this residential lot here that was purchased by the village for the GWA plant, and this is also unincorporated Glen Allen. So with the annexation ordinance that's in front of you this evening, there are two pieces of property that will be annexed. One is the annexation of the Lombard portion, and then also the annexation of these two lots that are unincorporated into the Village of Glen Allen. So there are two plates of annexation that you do have in your packet. I can answer any questions about the annexation at this time, if there's any from the board.
Any questions? Comments? Any questions? I should have asked the other one. Any questions from the public? Okay. Can I have a, can I have a motion, please?
You could have both, if you'd like. We'll start with the ordinance. Make a motion to approve ordinance number 6504, an ordinance approving an annexation of the Glenbard Wastewater Authority property located at 21 West 551 Bemis Road and 21 West 518 Bemis Road.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, Trustee Enright seconded. A roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Ladisic?
Yes.
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Pride?
Aye.
Trustee Sennec?
Aye.
Great, thank, got everyone there? Thank you. All right, we are going to change the order of the agenda real quick. We're going to skip ahead to item H. We have 2017 Street Resurfacing Projects, presented by Professional Engineer.
Okay, good evening, Madam President and members of the board. We have a very, Engineering has a very exciting project we'd like to present for your consideration this evening. Given that the project was designed and competitively bid by our in-house senior civil engineer, Tom Topper, I'd like to give him the honor of making the presentation on the project this evening, but I'll be here to help him out with any questions that may come up.
Thank you. Good evening. I have for your consideration a staff recommendation for approval of the award of a construction contract and construction engineering services agreement for the 2017 Street Resurfacing Project. Staff has recently completed the in-house design and the competitive bidding process for our. for our annual resurfacing project, which includes approximately 3.8 miles of streets to be improved this year. These improvements were included in the long-range capital plan as well as the 2016 and the 2017 capital improvements plan. As shown on the graphics, there are 19 street segments that are included in this project and are spread out across the village. Scope of the project includes asphalt grinding, resurfacing, curb replacement, sidewalk repairs, and miscellaneous drainage improvements. Most significantly, work will be done in the Spring Grove Lombard-Dupage area, which is slated for our enhanced street resurfacing, which is, which involves full-depth pavement removal and curb replacement. Project was bid in late April with seven contractors submitting a bid. The low bid was submitted by Geneva Construction Company at a cost of $2,2910. The low bid came in about 19% under the engineer's estimate of $2,472,000. Geneva Construction Company is an experienced and competent contractor who has successfully completed similar projects in the past. Including a 3% contingency, the recommended contract amount is $2,060,000. The project will get ready to start in June and will be completed in mid-October of this year. The scope of the project has been expanded since the budget was developed this year. Additional streets were added to the project, including Amy Court, the extension of resurfacing limits on Sunnybrook Road, and drainage and work on Elstrand Road, as well as taking a more comprehensive approach to pavement resurfacing by slightly increasing the resurfacing thicknesses to ensure prolonged pavement performance and reduce future improvement costs. The aforementioned additions has pushed the total project cost about $246,000 above the current budget of $1,835,000. However, funds were provided in the Contract Street Maintenance Fund to pay for these additional improvements, as detailed on page 232 of the agenda. Staff would also like to bring attention to the excellent unit prices that the contract, the contract pay items received, were received for this project, particularly asphalt prices. The low bidder's asphalt price for this, for surface was $61 per ton, which is an excellent price, not seen as low in the last decade or so. So staff feels that it is an excellent time to put a large project like this and take advantage of the low unit prices. Staff would like to provide a recommendation of award of the project to Geneva Construction Company in the amount of $2,060,000. The second contract is the construction engineering services. The RFP was, for construction engineering services, was issued to 13 engineering firms. Eight firms submitted proposals for the assignment. Using an evaluation and scoring matrix, staff identified HLR proposal as best and most favorable to the village, based on the evaluation factors. In terms of price, HLR's proposal of $114,801.5 is very competitive, at about 5.5% of the value of the construction contract. It is, though, about $4,500 higher than the lowest price proposal submitted by Rampe Sharp. HLR's approach to handling ADA compliance of proposed infrastructure, utility coordination, traffic control, and public safety made their proposal stand out, among others. Staff feels that the outlined benefits of selecting HLR outweigh the additional cost of the services. The approved 2017 budget allocates $136,000 for construction engineering services on this project. Staff recommends retaining HLR for construction engineering services for the 2017 street resurfacing project and the total fixed price amount of $114,801.5. This concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
The asphalt is cheaper now?
It is.
And is it, is it the same quality of asphalt? I mean, is there a difference in any of that?
No, there's no difference.
Oh, it's just cheaper for some reason?
It is cheaper.
Spot market?
Yes, it's, it's based on, there is not as much demand for project, projects currently. The contractors are bidding more competitively, and they're just trying to pick up work, so it's, that's probably the main reason, and probably oil prices also have something to do with it.
Tollway work. Tollway work, not doing as much as in the typical year.
Other questions?
What was the impetus for expanding the project to include Amy Court and Dupage Boulevard, such that that now puts us above what was budgeted?
We completed a pavement condition index survey this last year. We did receive the results of that, and one of the streets that was programmed for 2019, Amy Court, we felt that that was warranted to get in there and resurface that a little bit sooner. There was some resident concerns, and given the unit pricing that we're receiving here, we still recommend that's a good, it's a good time to resurface that street. Stacy Court, there was some concerns brought up to staff in regards to the edge of the roadway, the condition of, in terms of drainage, there was poor drainage throughout there, so Stacy Court was added from St. Charles Road to Emerson. We were doing some work on Highland, and again, we felt that this would be, that would be a good candidate to add to this particular project. So, the, those improvements were planned at some point or another within the capital plan in the next two years or so, so we felt that it was appropriate to move them up in the schedule.
When was the survey conducted that led you to conclude that that was, it was appropriate to move it up?
We got the results from that survey early this year, but the, the survey was actually conducted last summer. So, the pavement condition index survey was completed by a consulting firm, and we received the results earlier this year. I don't have the exact date, but I can certainly provide that to you.
Was there some reason why, when you had the results earlier in the year, that it wasn't brought to the board's attention around the budgeting process, so that this could have been included? You know, I'm a bit concerned that we're going over budget here, when, you know, I'm not sure that there's a need to do that.
Well, we certainly, we certainly could have done that. I apologize for not doing that, but we did include, as Tom alluded to, we included a significant amount of skip paving within the, within our budget, and we're, we're taking some of those funds, and applying those essentially towards Amy Court and Stacy. So we're still going to be within the allocated funds that we have. We're just basically stealing some of the skip paving money, if you will, and applying it towards this particular project. And there's also a significant amount of concrete repairs that were included within the budget. Staff was directed to increase the budget amounts last fall as part of the budget cycle process, so this would be a good opportunity to utilize those funds at these excellent unit prices that we have.
You mentioned that there were some drainage improvements that were being undertaken as part of this. Can you just give me some sense of whether, and how that might improve the stormwater management for the residents in the areas where this work is going to be done?
Sure, we're essentially on Stacy Court. The drainage improvements are really limited to trying to address some rutting that is occurring at the edge of the roadway just north of St. Charles on the east side of the street. So by essentially improving that situation, providing positive drainage, there's not going to be standing water in those locations. There are some concerns. Whenever you have standing water, residents get concerned about mosquito breeding, you know, during the summertime, or ice during the wintertime. Tom has included some nice features in the project. There's, there is some regrading work that is needed on Buena Vista, for example, east of Park Boulevard, and he's incorporated some bio swales, so there's some areas that are, again, there's standing water, and we're incorporating some green infrastructure into the project, so residents within that area won't see the water standing as much, and again, have some of the concerns about ice, or, you know, mosquito breeding during the summertime.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, didn't she say you were moving something up, too? It was originally going to be 2019, one of those streets?
That's Amy Court.
I see Amy Court.
On Amy Court, is that grind and resurface?
Yes, that's just a mill and overlay and spot curb and gutter repairs as well.
Okay, so the base of that, because I think that street was done by a developer when that subdivision went in, so I just was wondering if there was any, if there was a concern with the base on that, so it sounds like the road is held up, it's just typical maintenance?
Right, yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Question about, so we, I think we made a commitment to look at the water that runs south on Main, towards the houses behind Five Corners. Is that, I don't see anything here. I know that wasn't part of the plan, but if we're going to go over budget here, do we have a plan to be able to do that? Or is that something that wouldn't happen until next year's plan? What's, what's the plan to that, given that we, I don't know if the word commitment is, but we said that we would look at it and try to improve on that?
I guess I'm not familiar with that. I don't know, Mark, if you have?
Just to come over, if you repeat that real quick, I'm sorry.
Sure, I felt that, as we were discussing Five Corners, as we were discussing the water that runs south on Main, and then goes back into the little mall there, little buildings that are there, and then runs back into the property, that we were going to look to see if we could improve that. And I, I don't know if there's a dollar amount set for that, or if that's something for next year, since we're going, since we're exceeding the budget here, I just try and understand.
No, that's, I understand the question. We have, we are looking into that. We think the first step is making sure that the property owner is maintaining their existing storm lines effectively, and then see if that corrects the problem. If not, we are looking to potentially do a stormwater project there, either later this year or next year, but that, this project would not impact those dollars or that process. So we are looking at that actively with our, with our property maintenance group, as well as our stormwater team, the public works.
Okay.
Street resurfacing does, that's just a part of, I mean, you could probably answer it better than me, but I mean, that's just a part of then, the overall global budget, but I think the other thing, too, we were going to look to see if there was some private property owner accountability for some changes that were made. Good point, Jim.
But I will mention that, that, out of the series of those meetings that we had at that time, I met, staff met with some residents in the Stacy Court area, and that's why that project was included, kind of at a late date, but we did, they identified some rutting issues and some pavement issues on that stretch, and we think it was a good opportunity to get that resolved now and be responsive to the neighbors.
Aye. You want to go?
Well, I was just going to say, having spent the last 13-plus years on capital improvements, this comes up quite a bit, and I think it's a, it's a perfect example of getting a very favorable condition. You know, we do PCI testing of all of our roads. It's not every year, I think it's every three years or something of that nature, and routinely watch for roads that disintegrate at a much faster rate, and we found it's a much better investment of village dollars to fix a road when we can than push it another year. I would be in favor of Stacy Court. I drive that quite a bit in my neighborhood, and it's falling apart in another year. It'll be twice as bad as it is this year, so the fact that conditions are favorable, this is a good time to address it, and I would agree with shifting the funds and using the skip patching and the curb replacement to try and pick up some of these roads, because it's a long-term good investment for the village.
I just have one follow-up question. So in your opinion, moving these projects up, do you think that that will reduce the overall cost of the project? Meaning, if we do it now, under the pricing structures that are available, and some of the, essentially kind of structural issues that are there, will this ultimately cost less to do it now than it will in 2019?
There's no guarantee that prices wouldn't be lower, but, you know, right now, we're seeing extremely aggressive pricing, and a big factor of it is in that the tollway has really ramped down their work. However, as you might have seen in the paper recently, they just approved a project to expand and widen 294, and so are anticipating that there's going to be a lot of projects gearing up again, and that prices tend to, you know, to increase in the future. So I think it's a safe assumption, we're seeing extremely good pricing right now, both on the contractor's side, as well as on the consultant engineer's side, and again, by, as trustee Pride is indicating, by, by not deferring the maintenance, we're reducing future costs. There could be additional base repairs required if we were to prolong resurfacing of these streets. I do just want to mention one other thing briefly. The, the village staff was directed in 2014 to kind of revise its approach towards not reconstructing the uncurbed streets in the village, and so as part of this project, we're following that directive, and part of that is to, is to try to reduce the burden on the Capital Projects Fund. So any of the uncurbed streets, such as Buena Vista, Glenbard, Sunnybrook, Highland, Stacy, we're not completely reconstructing those, we're just taking a resurfacing approach. If you look at the overall cost of this project, it's about $520,000 per mile. The resurfacing project, or the reconstruction project that I'm going to be bringing forth for your consideration on June 12th, is going to be, is going to be over $4 million per mile, in terms of the cost. So you can see there's a big difference in the strategies that we're taking here, and the directive that we were given, again, is with the uncurbed streets, don't reconstruct those, don't make all the full sewer and water upgrades, and try to, to stretch the dollars, if you will, until the next cycle, at which point we would look at reconstructing those streets.
Thank you.
Are we curbing these streets or replacing in kind?
We are replacing in kind.
And the $4 million project is Park Boulevard?
It's $4 million per mile, I guess is what I'm just trying to compare to. It's, the engineer's estimate right now is 3.1 million, and that's the Montclair East Davis Smith Turner project. So we're, we're out to bid with that project right now, and we open up bids on June 1st, so we're trying to bring that forward on, on June 12th.
Any other questions? Any public questions? Yes. Can you please? Or you can also use that microphone, it's up to you.
Good evening, my name's Nathan Darka. First of all, you just appointed me to the Historic Preservation Committee, and I haven't met anybody, so hello, and thank you. Secondly, I live on Grove Avenue, so I'm getting a new street, so thank you again. I just had a quick question about sump pump tie-ins. The north half of Grove has them, the south half does not. I live on the does-not side, so I was just wondering if those were going to be part of it.
Absolutely, we'd work with you, we would work with you to, to try to incorporate that in part, as part of the project.
Great, thank you a third time.
Thank you, and welcome aboard to the commissions.
Rich, does he need to reach out to Public Works to coordinate that, or?
Yes, if we could get your address before you leave, what's?
Sure.
South side.
It's actually in our packet, it's in. So, all right, any other questions? Anyone else from the public? All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the village manager to execute a construction contract with Geneva Construction Company of Aurora, Illinois, in the amount of $2,060,000 for the 2017 street resurfacing projects to be expensed to the Capital Projects Fund. And a motion to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick Incorporated, HLR, of Elgin, Illinois, in the amount of $114,801.50 for the construction engineering services on the 2017 street resurfacing projects to be expensed to the Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Which one?
I'll default. He was on the Capital Projects.
Trustee Pride has a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Pride?
Aye.
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack?
Yes.
Trustee Senak?
Aye.
Thank you very much, motions both passed. Good job. Okay, going back to item G, 2017 Municipal Electric Aggregation, presented by Assistant Village Manager, I can never say last name.
Stonage.
Stonage, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, good evening. Pleased to be before you, to review with you the latest bids for the village's community electric aggregation program. I should mention also that Chairman Cruiser from the Environmental Commission is here, he'll want to speak to you a few words about the program. As the board may recall, back on May 15th, at the board workshop, we reviewed kind of some sample market pricing to give you a sense of where the market was going, and also give the board an opportunity to deliberate on a policy discussion as to whether our energy portfolio was going to contain green energy, and to what, if at all, and to what extent, and then also ultimately if the board wanted to continue in the program as a whole. The direction staff received was, the board did direct staff to go get some fresh pricing by way of our consultants, the NYMEC group, and we were also directed to include in that the option of no green. And we were also directed to include in that the option of no green, but with the opt-in option for a resident. So if we went out for the bid, I'll call it brown pricing, for, just for simplicity of terms, an individual resident, if he or she would like, would be able to opt into the 100% green and pay the premium price individually. What we also did is included an option in the bid pricing for 100% green pricing, with the ability to opt in to the brown, and take advantage of that lower savings, if that makes sense. So we wanted to create some flexibility there for you. And also, in the bid package is some in-between pricing. So we have a blend of 25% green or renewable energy resources, and then also 50% renewable energy as well, depending on the board's preference point. As you'll see in your packet, the bids did come in, we have four participants, three responsive bids. There was one of those, there was a no bid by Mid-American, Constellation, Dyna-G, MC Squared, all big major players in the marketplace. David Hoover, who's our consultant with NYMEC, has just joined us too, and will be able to answer any technical questions for you as well. But in summary, which was included in the packet and left on your dais this evening, was the bid pricing. And in summary, lowest brown pricing, meaning the village would not purchase any additional REX, it would contain in it the 13% mandated state green energy, that's required by state, but no additional. That was Dyna-G at 6.993 cents per kilowatt hour for a 14-month term. And that, again, would include the opt-in for a resident, if they so choose, to have access to the 100% green on an individualized basis. In terms of the lowest green pricing, was through Constellation Energy. This is the one area you'll see where Dyna-G did not have the lowest pricing. So Dyna-G is gonna have the lowest on all the green options, with the exception of 100%. So Constellation Energy came in at 7.174 cents per kilowatt hour for a 12-month term. A little different than a Dyna-G at a 14-month term for a 12-month term. Again, with the opt-in for a resident who wants to opt in, and just maybe doesn't want to do the green energy at all.
I'm sorry, Al, could you, what was that, what was the kilowatt cost on that?
100% green for Constellation, 12-month term, 7.174 kilowatts per hour.
Thank you.
The difference between 100% green and the brown pricing works out to about $1.63 a month, or roughly just under $20 per year to the average household. One other option, or one other consideration that we wanted to be sure that we were looking into, was the village the last two years, because of its participation in electric aggregation, has been awarded the EPA Green Power Community Award. And you'll see, probably see some signs out in the community that are reflecting that. And we wanted to check in, we checked in with them to make sure, well, if we decided to back out an electric aggregation program entirely, what would be the, the effect on our award status, if you will, or certification? And if we were to back out of electric aggregation entirely, we would no longer be eligible for the award. However, interestingly enough, if, if we participate by just as little as 3%, then we would still qualify for the EPA award, oddly enough. So they do not award a certification, just because of the state mandated 13%, we wouldn't qualify for that. So that gives you a sense of a little bit of the, the pricing that we received. This next slide here, just to give you a sense of what does this mean to the average resident. The top table, again, gets into the 100% green bid pricing that we received from Constellation versus the brown pricing from Dyna-G, about $1.63 a month, or just under $20 per year to the average household. The second two tables here, really, well, what does this, what if we just go back to COMEd? And as we indicated at the workshop, the COMEd's average rate today is 7.185 cents per kilowatt hour, which is reflected, reflected here. And then as you go across the table here, the low bid for the 100% green, Constellation, would be about 10 cents per month savings through 100% green through Constellation, or about just over a dollar a year to the average resident. If we look at what is COMEd's pricing versus Dyna-G's bid price of 14-month brown pricing, it works out to about $1.73 per month, or just above $20 to the average homeowner. That does not include that variable PEA charge that can go up and down on a monthly basis, it's just flat pricing, if you will. The Environmental Commission obviously continues to support the 100% green initiative. And I will, if there are no further questions for me at the moment, President McGinley, we can turn it over to Chairman Cruiser for a few comments, if you'd like.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Al. Al, Al and Mark have been great advocates for trying to improve our environment generally, and of course, Mr. Sennett too. And the entire village has been, generally. I think this will be the third opportunity, maybe the fourth opportunity, for us to continue with 100% green. I just wanted to point out a couple things, because I think we have a few board members who are not familiar to this concept. Municipal aggregation allows our residents to have the opportunity to purchase power for less than they could on the market themselves. So if they choose to do something other than proceed with COMEd, and the rate is, again, currently 7.185, if they wanted to go all green themselves, they would have to pay significantly more than what's available to them currently through municipal aggregation. So a resident can't just go out and buy green energy at this price. That's the benefit of municipal aggregation. Historically, we have decided as a village to go with 100% green, even though there have been lesser rates available for us to do otherwise through municipal aggregation. And I think we've done that with the idea that ultimately, we have some obligation, I like to think that we have some obligation, to try to do what we can to address our environment globally. Not just here, but globally. Yes, these are energy credits, but at the same time, this allows us to drive the market, to allow renewable energy providers to, of course, produce more renewable greenhouse gas-free power for us and our residents, and for the, for the residents of our United States generally. The worst-case scenario that I'm hearing right now is, our residents might have to pay $20 more a year, the average household, if we choose to go with 100% green. Now let's think about that, that's, that's an entree at Fire and Wine. One entree for 12 months. That's maybe two or three beers at Main Street. And I think for the most part, our residents would pay for that, if they knew that we were able to continue with the purchase of 100% green energy, which benefits our planet, and of course, them and our children ultimately. So I don't see it as a huge expense. Al, I was just curious, what, what's been the rate of people actually opting out of this initiative and going to COMEd? Do we know what that's been historically?
We have about, David, I'll, I'll read on you, we have about 80% participation in the aggregation program.
Sorry, how, what percentage?
80%.
80% on the 100% renewable?
80% of the program collectively.
And David, is that because people choose to opt out of it, or are there some other reasons for that? Do you know?
Yeah, the opt-out rates are generally less than 5%. If anyone has chosen their own individual supplier, they're excluded from the program, and obviously, we leave them alone. So they're not, so that's part of the, that's the lion's share of the 80%.
So I think that's been a pretty good rate of return with 100% green energy over the now four or five years that we've decided to continue to pursue it. And certainly, any resident who, with this new contract, if any new resident decides to go ahead and opt out, they can. They can choose to default back to COMEd, that would be their choice. Or presumably, they can go out and purchase whatever they want on their own. But again, they would not be able to purchase 100% green at this rate, it would be measurably more. Before you right now on the big screen is one of the two signs that we proudly display throughout the village, showing that we are a green power community. I think we take pride in that. We've advertised this achievement twice in our E-Blast, most recently January of 2017. And I think this is, to some extent, I'd like to think at least, that this is something that our residents are proud in, proud with. And I'd like to think that, to some extent, people who move here, or choose to move here, will be proud of this. Our millennials and so on, the people who are behind us in age, who, from what I've heard from statistics, have maybe more interest in being green than maybe we do at our ages. I think we're proud of being an environmentally, I guess, good community, generally. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at some of the other communities that have received the EPA award. We are Glen Allen, the entire United States. Do we have that up, Al, is that available? I'm sorry. The green power community ranking? Okay, well, anyway. Glen Allen is number 16. The number 16 ranked community with respect to green power percentage of total electricity use in the entire country, number 16. I think that's something to be proud of. And do we want to lose that? I don't know that we do. Other Illinois communities that also are within this ranking include Aurora, Arlington Heights, Evanston, Alton, Urbana. Those are the top 40. We've got four other Illinois communities. We're number 16. And we're gonna lose that rank if we decide to do something other than 100% green. With these current rates, even though they're not as good as we've seen in the past, we will still be less than COMEd, which is the default-to rate. We will still be less than COMEd. And $20 a year is the worst-case scenario. So I hope that we'll decide to go ahead and continue with 100% green at this marginal monetary, I guess, bad news to our residents, that they might lose an entree at Fire and Wine over the course of our year. There are other options, the 25%, 50%, certainly to the extent that you don't want to burden our residents with that extra $20. It would be nice if we could choose one of those options. So, thanks so much, and I truly appreciate all the efforts that the village has shown to be 100% green over these past four to five years.
Can I ask you a question on the 25-50? It sounds like if we go pure brown, a resident can opt in to the 100% green. Is that the way I understand that?
Well, that's the current concept, Al.
That's correct, Trustee Kenwood.
So, doesn't that achieve, how does that, that achieves everybody the right to choose which one they want? Does that impact that sign there?
Well, I, I believe it would. If you were to choose to go with the COMEd product, for example, which other energy providers allow for with this pricing structure, I believe we would lose the EPA award status. I, I think Al's suggestion that we go with 100% green, and allow our residents to opt out of it, to the extent that they want to save the price of that entree over the course of the year, that that might be the better option, Mr. Kenwood.
So if we went that route, and then, let's say, 80% of the people opted out, would we then still lose that sign? I'm trying to understand, what is it that keeps this rating? Is it that we go 100% in and you can opt out?
What keeps your rating is the, the percentage of your energy portfolio in the community that is dedicated to renewable energy.
So if we went the green, and 80% of the people opted out to brown, then we would lose that, that status?
If 80% did, yes.
Yeah, okay.
For Al.
Huh?
Sorry, are you done?
Yeah, yeah, no, I thought you were asking me.
No, no, no. You say we can keep our green award at 3% REX over the 13%. Is that 3% 300 basis points, or is it 3% of the 13? 300% of base, 300 basis points makes it 16. 3% of the 13 is less, makes it about 14. So it's 300, so we'd have to purchase 16% of green energy to be, to get the award still, right? All right. And we at the, we at the board meeting agreed that we'd do the 13% with the opt-in. Now, my question is renewable energy, is that, I don't think that includes coal, right?
Correct.
It doesn't include nuclear?
No.
Does it include natural gas?
No.
So it only includes other. So if we look at the demographics of these power sources, most of them only have other 5%, 4%, 5%, 3%. So are, is, have we done something with the electric grid that it's smart electrons going through it, that we only get the?
No.
No.
For anyone, your, your point is correct. We can't take power cords from the wind farms and plug it into Glen Allen. So any, by, anytime anyone were to say they were 50% green, 100% green, it's through the purchase of the renewable energy certificates REX, okay? And so, it's just an increased cost. That cost that you pay, or the residents pay, eventually goes back and subsidizes the production of it, of it green. So you are able to legitimately say, you're 100% green, you're 50% green, or you're 16% green, whichever. It's, that's what the funds do. So, so we, it, the, the power sources that you see, that's just the general makeup of the power source. Any supplier above and beyond that would have to go purchase these additional REX to service your community to whatever level you would want them to be. So that's just for informational purposes, that's not where the REX would, that's not where the green power would come from.
So they go out, they know we're gonna use consumption of X, they only produce X divided by 2, they gotta go purchase certificates that they're buying at someplace, even though we're not getting renewable energy, we're probably getting nuclear, or some variation of energy.
That's correct, but somewhere in the country, you are subsidizing the generation of that, of that green power.
We're still committing to 100% green. It's just the market way of doing it, because we don't have the opportunity, like some cities do, to have a power plant, whatever that power source may be, where they can actually tap right into it, whether wind or otherwise. So it's, it's a market way of doing what I, I believe to be the environmentally most friendly way of purchasing our power at a rate that's less than COMEd.
David, so what they purchase is almost like buying the CO2 certificates, the, you know, the CO2
Offsets.
Offsets, yeah, out in the market, same principle, same thing.
Correct, yeah, there, these REX are, they're, they're licensed by the, by the FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, they're licensed, they're tracked, they're retired, you know, when they're used. So it's, it's the, it's a legitimate process. And again, it's the only way anybody who says they're 100% green qualifies.
I had a question, as far as like going short-term, 12 months or 36 months, is it because they expect that some of these prices are gonna go up, like natural gas prices are going to go up? Because it is pretty low right now, right? Natural gas prices are pretty low right now?
Correct, power is low. The, these prices include approximately half of the price, half of the cost that you see here are regulatory costs. To actually generate the power is roughly half the cost of what you see here. The regulatory costs are required and regulated to move power throughout our 13-state regional grid, and to provide ample power during periods of time that we need that. Those are published three years in advance. And as a result, you'll see all the suppliers factoring that in, to see their prices going up each of the next three years. COMEd rate will be going up the next three years, because COMEd has to pay that same cost. Any, any supplier providing power to the COMEd rate will pay that same exact in- increased regulatory cost.
So, in your opinion, is it a better idea to lock in to, even though, you know, the thirty-six month rate is seven forty-one, is it a good idea to lock in now for, for long-term, because the prices could jump much more?
You're asking a very good question, and you're asking me to, to prognosticate on the future of the, of the power markets and the natural gas markets. You're, you're right in saying that we're at a low period in the marketplace right now, we're, and the natural gas and power prices are low. It would be hard for me to argue, I would say there's upside risk and downside risk, and I think that's what you're saying. It's also hard for me to suggest a program where you're instantly underwater, so to speak. As a result, almost exclusively of the twenty deals that we've done in the last six weeks, they've all been of a very short-term nature.
And, and my, my assumption, when I looked at this, is that the companies do have ways to forecast what prices are going to be two or three years out, right? I mean, they're looking at demand, supply, output, and they're factoring that in here, right? It's not, hey, because it's low now, they're, they have a trend on, it's either going to go higher or lower, based demand-supply economy, and they factor that into the price.
Correct, and that's how they come with their price.
Right.
Yes. The actual commodity itself, the actual commodity, the generation of the power, to your point, is actually trending slightly downward over the next three years, okay? So, what that tells you is, all the increases that we're looking at, are these regulatory...
Oh, regulatory increases.
Everybody's going to pay those. So, the current, the current ComEd rate is seven, excuse me, six-three in June, next month, it's going to go to seven-two, and after that, it's going to probably go in the neighborhood of seven-six. So, worse, the regulatory prices are pushing up all, all power supply costs.
Are those regulatory pricing, is that all state, or is it state and federal?
It's not state, it's federal.
It's all federal.
There's a, there's a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission that oversees all the various grids, and so they oversee our grids, well, it's federal.
Dave, quick question, when, when our residents have opted out of the program, as been discussed earlier, it was, they opted out of aggregation, period. They didn't just opt out of one hundred percent green, when they opted out, it was all out.
When they opt out, they revert to Commonwealth Edison?
Right.
Okay, Commonwealth Edison has just the minimum requirements for the, for the green standard. After that point in time, they can go wherever they want, most likely, they'll probably stay at ComEd. We just don't see a lot of individual offers that are very compelling.
Right, it, it seemed, it was presented that you could opt out of just one hundred percent green, but when you, when we use the phrase "opt out" before, it was opt out of the aggregation rate that we collectively approved.
Right, so, let me clarify, we're using the term, you know, rightly so, but in two different phrases. So, you're right, you're saying that if, when, any, anytime you renew a program, if a resident opts out, because they'll get the letter, they'll get a little form, if they don't want to be part of the village program, that's okay, they fill the form out, and then go back to ComEd. I think what Al was referring to, rightly so, is an option that he, we've talked about at the request of the board, is to say hypothetically, if you were to select a hundred percent renewable product, such as the Constellation rate at seven-one-seven-four, suppliers, Constellation, all the suppliers are willing to say, in their letter, informational letter, if you would like to save a few bucks and go back to the zero percent additional renewable, we'll do that at seven point one cents. So, they, residents can stay in the program, they can opt out of the program, or they can opt to the less renewable product.
They, they still wouldn't get the six-nine-nine, though.
So, that's correct, because if you're at Constellation, Constellation's going to offer their, their twelve-month zero percent renewable price, that's going to be the seven-one-four. We can't opt them over to another supplier, so we're stuck at a supplier.
Okay, we were given pricing for a twenty-five percent green energy.
Yep.
Could we, or could you put together a program that was sixteen percent green energy, so that we, you know, maintained the status with the...
You know, I've never, we've never done that, but I don't see why not. If you want to maintain the three percent, and Al...
Have you verified that that's the, that would suffice if you had three percent above?
Right. I've taken a look at, just so you, at the dinoji rate, and I appreciate what you're, at the three percent level. I am pretty confident that they would do that at the three percent level, and I can tell you that their cost is going to be just a hair above seven cents. That's the calculations that I do to, so I believe that they would, and I believe your rate would be just a shade above seven cents.
So, the six-nine would be seven, six...
Seven, I'm sorry.
The six-nine would be seven...
Well, if you did, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if this board decided to give direction to staff for sixteen percent, we would have to pump this and get a rebid, so it would not be voted on tonight.
Correct.
I think the, 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 the board gave staff the, a direction at the workshop to do, come back with thirteen percent and an opt-in to one hundred percent, and I, I'm having trouble finding that.
No, that's, that's...
That's the, that's the... That's the brown, that we calling it brown?
Yes.
Brown is thirteen.
That's the thirteen.
Right. And often, the board will give direction to staff about these rates, and when the rates come in, oftentimes, they'll reevaluate and decide to go in a different direction based on the prices seen before them at the, at that exact time. So, it's not unusual to change.
Well, I, I think that from, I think the discussion took on a fact that, from the consultants' information that we had, that eighty percent of the communities do the opt-in at thirteen, and go in at thirteen percent, and I think that weighed heavy on mine, to go to the thirteen, thirteen percent versus the hundred percent. And I, I, I understand it's twenty dollars to myself, but to a whole community, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is a, a tax that we are essence sending on to them to be green. It is a, a premium.
But it's still less than what you would pay through ComEd, and I think...
I'm not, we're not, we're not discussing that, that's mixing apples and oranges. We decide to go this route and consolidate our energy uses to get better rates.
But I'm, I'm letting you know that it's less than what the ComEd rate, which is what our residents would have to pay if not for the benefit of municipal aggregation, which we've chosen to do over the past four to five years.
And, and I understand that. But that's not the, that's not the discussion, the discussion is the level of green now, through the aggregation.
And historically, it's been on one hundred percent, we've still been able to provide better than a million dollars of savings over the past four to five years, if not significantly more than that, to our residents by going with one hundred percent green. They will still see savings with this next twelve months, if that's what you choose to do. The downside to the residents will be, if you choose to do something different, they might lose that entree at Fire and Wine. I would like to think that our residents, who have very rarely opted out of one hundred percent green in the past four to five years, will continue to do it, and will continue to be proud that they're doing what they can to improve our environment. Statistics have shown that better than seventy percent of all of America would prefer to see government, local government, do something to address climate change, and I think we've seen that the science has more or less told us that unless we do something about it, we could be facing some very significant problems with respect to our children, our grandchildren, et cetera. So, in my mind, it's a small price to pay to do what we can to be environmentally friendly, and I think our residents generally have spoken that they, they appreciate what this village has done to do that.
And I respect that, I mean, one of the challenges of, of representing such a diverse constituency base is the diverse interests of the constituency base, you know, so, you know, while this certainly could get political, you know, I, I think that the challenge to us is, what is the most cost-effective way to deliver services to our residents, and that's what prompted us to look into electrical aggregation to begin with. And I, I think that by offering a, a resident the opportunity to opt in, we're already benefiting the residents in the electrical aggregation program, by, by offering those residents that would, that, for whatever their interests may be, to opt into one hundred percent green, knowing that they may not be getting that, they, I, I think that's good. Again, it's another surplus. The loss might be that we, that we lose the sign, first, I brought up the sign, I think, in the recent discussion, as far as signage up at Five Corners, and I, and I think that, that that sign needs to be relocated, if we keep it, it needs to be relocated further away from Five Corners, because there's just too many signs up there right now, and we discussed having possibly some school signage up there for the safety of, of the students at Forest Glen, so.
It was not my intent to bring politics into the discussion, I'm pretty much addressing what I believe to be the science, but, you know, still, the residents will have the option of opting out of one hundred percent green, Peter, so if they do want to save the extra couple dollars annually, or the worst-case scenario, maybe as much as twenty dollars annually, they'll be able to continue to do that, they will all get notice of that option to them.
Right, because my issue with that is that a lot of people just don't know that. People are trusting that what we deliberate here this evening is going to be in the best interests of the community as a whole, and I, I see it, my, and me representing the constituency base that I'm the most familiar with, they would want the best deal that's out there, and then, if they chose, for whatever reason, to, you know, to be, to want to be one hundred percent green, that's something they can opt into as a proactive thing, rather than, because most people just aren't aware of what we even deliberate on on a weekly basis, I'm sure that comes as no surprise, but they do, I think our residents do trust that we are, we are providing the, the best product at the best price, so.
So, if we were to try to understand, if we were to try to understand what our residents are telling us, do we have the data that says, of the hundred percent of the community, how many just opted out and stayed, opted out of the aggregation program? Do we know what that number is roughly? Just the aggregation, not the green versus not green?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can I ask the question again?
Yeah. So, I'm trying to understand what the village, what the community has been telling us through some data. So, we have an aggregation program, a certain percentage have opted out of that program totally, and do we know, doesn't matter where they went, whether ComEd or whatever, do we have an understanding of what percentage?
Yeah, we think it's eighty, and we think it's twenty percent.
So, twenty percent opted out?
Twenty percent either chose to opt out, or previously made their own arrangements with their own...
Okay, so that leaves eighty percent that are in this aggregation program. At a hundred percent green, do we know how many of the eighty percent opted out of being a hundred percent green for brown?
We did not give them a choice in our study.
No choice. Did we get any complaints for brown? Did we get any requests for brown?
There were a few calls that we take every year, you know, especially when the program is changing, and I would probably, I could say, maybe one or two phone calls I heard, where they weren't, they didn't want the green energy, in which case, we explained to them, you could opt out, and they did, if, if, at least they, they had that choice.
Okay, so, the difference in what we did previously versus now is, there is an actual opt-out process, and we'd have to make that very clear in the letter, that they could do that if they were not supportive of a hundred percent green energy, correct?
Correct.
And is that, okay, all right.
So, just, if I may, three points, I think. One is to follow up on John's point, and really Pete's point, if we look at what we have that reflects what our community wants, even at the high end, we would see twenty percent opting out, for whatever reason, but eighty percent seem to be satisfied with the one hundred percent green alternative. And if the objective is to reflect what our constituents want, it seems they're pretty satisfied with what they have, for whatever reason that may be, the one hundred percent green seems to be something that they're interested in, and they continue it. So, if we look at whether, setting our own personal feelings aside, it seems the community favors the one hundred percent green alternative. When I look at this, I don't see it as a big cost to virtually anyone here, at least in the present day, but I do see that this is a reflection of what our community will be perceived at, to potential homebuyers who are looking at a variety of different suburbs, and thinking about which one they might want to locate to. And it seems that if you look at virtually any of the surveys on what people are looking for when they're looking at a community, sustainability, green, a green community is something that is desirable for people who are looking to locate and raise their family in one of the suburbs, in west or north or south. So, being able to demonstrate to them a commitment by our village to sustainability is something that I think would attract potential homebuyers to our community, which supports a continued level of retail, of equalized assessed value, home values, whatnot, that I think everybody benefits from. And then finally, Mr. Cruiser's point, I do think there is some moral responsibility, not just to us here, but to the future generations that are going to occupy either this village or anyplace else, to try to do what we can to keep the environment as clean as we can. And continuing on with this seems to serve that purpose, even if it's in a relatively modest way. So, it's a low-cost, that, alternative that seems to be desirable, not only for the present residents, but for future residents, I think it's something we should continue.
And Mark, can I make a, a comment about your number-two point?
You speak up a little bit.
Yes, Mark, if I, if I could make a comment about your number-two point, on social media, Facebook, for example, when the village does promote its municipal aggregation and its one hundred percent green status, or its EPA status, I frequently see as many likes as I do any other subject that the village posts on Facebook. I also see that our realtors are posting that information on their own Facebook pages, and I doubt very much that they're doing that with the idea that we're going to revert back to brown energy. I don't know that they would use that as an incentive to our new millennials to come and purchase property here in Glen Allen. Apparently, though, they do believe it's attractive enough to put on their own posting when it's one hundred percent green.
So, on your three points, I, I don't, I don't think we can conclude, based on the data, that eighty percent of the people are satisfied, because they really didn't have a choice, right?
Well, am I wrong, but did they have a choice to opt out?
Right, they had a choice to opt out, but they didn't, it's not, to me, it doesn't seem like the data would say, I opted out because it's not a hundred percent green, or fifty percent, or twenty-five percent green, it's, I like the brand of ComEd, and I'm just going to stick with that service because I'm familiar with it. My point is, we don't know, I don't think. I think where we would know, where we get another data point, is we decided that we would go green, we really didn't give people an option. We've got one data point that's fact-based, it says twenty percent opted out, we don't know why the other eighty percent stayed. They stayed, to your point, maybe because they liked it, or maybe just because they figured, hey, this aggregation is cheaper. One way we could get more data is if we stayed a hundred percent green, with the ability to opt out, and made that very clear in the, in the communication, but that by opting out of green and going brown, there could be a savings, and it's for them to decide, and then, assuming we could analyze that data next year, we'd be able to say, okay, of the eighty percent, here's what happened, which would give us a really strong indication of what the community actually feels.
You know, I think that's a good point, John.
I think we can also argue the same way, you can do it going up, which we all agreed to last week, that let them opt in, and you can get the same data point of how many people opt in.
Correct.
So, you get the same data point. I think, for one, having gone through this as a resident, to opt in or opt out, most people knew that it was, hey, we're going to aggregate data, just like we get our water from the Water Authority and pull it, and et cetera, instead of doing wells, so you have better pricing when you aggregate.
I think that's absolutely true, and I think what we can say about the current plan is that, for whatever reason, most people like it, because they continue to go with it.
At the aggregation, no, no one's arguing...
No, I mean, across the board, all the features of it seem to be desirable by an overwhelming statistical amount. I mean, even at eighty percent, that's, by whatever measure, that would be statistically significant.
But they weren't given an option to opt out of the green, that's, you know, the argument that's being made.
Yeah, I think John's point...
We have two options in front of us, one is to go green, and it costs the residents more money, okay? Option two is to go partial green, giving the residents, who have a moral inclination, or whatever it might be, a political lean, or whatever, to go to one hundred percent green, so, so...
And I think we can come up with an alternative in our lower one, to still keep our, our, our green status, because we don't have to go to the thirteen, which is eighty percent of the communities, we can go to sixteen, twenty, twenty-five, and still get our green We can go to 16, 20, 25 and still get our green status. By what was it, Al? By 2000, or David, by 2001, you have to be at 25% green?
Um, and by 2025, everybody will be at 25%.
Do we have any other questions at this point? Because I know the public has a question.
Oh, um, sorry, Al, is, did, did you have a recommendation on this? Is, as far as what we should do, or this is just, you're just giving us this information?
From staff's perspective, we're just kind of laying out the options.
I did have a question on duration of the consultant. So you, you said short-term probably makes sense because long-term would just be so much underwater, hard to recommend. Is 24 months short-term or is 14 months short-term in, at this point?
Uh, what we've seen in the marketplace for the last six weeks has been 12, 14 months.
Okay, so you would not, your recommendation would be definitely not 36 and probably not 24?
Correct. Those would be underwater immediately.
Yeah, okay.
Let me, if I might, just add one unfortunate fact. And that is, if we're going to renew the program, we do need to take action tonight.
Yep.
Or you, or I would ask if you had to delegate to, um, to staff with certain parameters because we're at the end of our renewal cycle. So we just have timing issues.
So we can't come back with a 16%, at least not for prices in front of the board?
Uh, yeah, that is correct. We won't have time to bring it back to the board. We can bring it back to staff. We can go get additional pricing. But we are pushing deadlines as far as all the mail and notice and, and waiting periods for invited response.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? You had a comment? Can you come up to the podium or, yes, please state your name and address for the record.
It's Jeff Ablin, 949 Oxford Road. My question was regarding the, the difference between the 100%, the opt-in and the opt-out, or the availabilities to opt into the green versus having it, that is the choice and you have to opt out to go back to brown. Do suppliers give a different price for that? Because I would think they might give a better price if it was 100% green with the option to opt out, figuring only 20% people might opt out, whereas the price might be higher if it was 100% brown and opting in for the green.
Uh, the, um, the prices would be what you have seen on the chart.
Okay.
Yeah, um, they're, they won't judge, they won't evaluate those. And another, just a point of clarification, we talk about, uh, just in general, we've used the word, uh, clarify. We've said 20% have opted out. Just to be clear, approximately 17% have already made their other choices. Um, they've gotten airline miles or they've responded to something. So they've, they're out. Only about 3 to 5% have actually chosen to opt out, taken the actual steps to opt out of the program.
Do you know how many of the 17% that have opted out for whatever reason, opt out to a green alternative?
That I don't. Those folks, I even hate to use the word opting out. They've made their own other choices. They've, it's just a private capitalistic venture where somebody responds to something. Nobody collects that data.
Uh, I, I can assume that was true, but I wasn't quite sure, so I thought I'd ask.
And, and if I can give you one other statistic unfortunate, or one other fact, is that whenever you give folks choices in the letters to move into a different category, what we've seen in the past, uh, and it's always been the election, when you do a 0% renewable and you give them the 100% option, um, I think a lot of people don't read the letter that far. We see very small response, positive responses to that.
Very small what?
Positive responses. I mean, in town of Glen Ellyn size.
You mean opting one way or the other? They just take what's good?
Well, yeah, um, so to be clear, but all that we've done so far has been, you know, 0% and we give them the 100% option. And handful of people, um, in a town your size.
Handful of people go to 0 or 100%?
No, no, we go to 100%. We've only given them to date, you know, all the aggregations we've done. We've only given the person, the option to move from 0 to 100%, okay? So we do a base, you know, rate, and we offer the 100% individually. Those responses are very low. Conversely, I would suggest that if you unfortunately did 100% and gave everybody a chance to opt down to 0%, my guess is the responses would be very low. I'm not sure it's going to be.
And the 0% just to be clear is brown and 100% being green?
Yeah, and just, so I don't think it'd be statistically satisfying to. I just think that it's a situation where most people don't spend the time to read all the way through and take the action.
Do we have control over the wording of the letter that goes out?
Uh, to a degree, yes. You'll see the letter and staff will make comment on that.
And then we, we can adjust the letter?
Uh, within limits, suppliers have to comply with everything they have their standards. So, um, they'll give it, uh, I mean, for instance, if you want to make an announcement about a new water park, they're not going to do that.
No, but I mean, within the program, right?
Yeah.
We can make it clear that by opting to brown, you'll get a lower rate, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
So I, I have a follow-up question on the, on the opt exercise. Since so many people do things electronically, do they physically get a mailing on this?
Correct.
If they've signed up for e-bill or auto pay or anything else, they don't get skipped in this program?
The only way that we can.
They get something that forces them to read or make a choice?
Yeah, the only way that we communicate the aggregation programs is 100% by mail. No phone, no door-to-door. All the communication is done through the mail.
And it's safe to say, uh, Al mentioned it already, though, we, we do get a number of phone calls. It, it's confusing. People get confused and throwing another option out there is going to confuse even more.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, what I have heard from the board is that we have, um, two different decisions to make. Uh, one is the number of months. And I, so for all intensive purposes, when I go around, I have us down at 14 month, um, just from the feedback that I heard so far. So if you disagree with 14, let me know. Then we have three options. 100% with opt-out option to brown. 16%, which if you do that, we would actually be voting tonight to authorize staff to make that agreement based on the prices that they receive tomorrow. Uh, or the third option is the brown, which is 13% with an option to opt in to 100%. Okay, so let's just see where we are with that before we figure out what kind of a motion we should put forward. Justice Sinek, would you like to start?
I'm sorry, I hate to do this to you.
Oh, what did I do?
I'm sorry. Uh, we, in picking the term, um, what I might, uh, so in the term of 14 months, actually the constellation 12 months, if you were looking at the 100% renewable, uh, the 12-month constellation is actually the least expensive. So instead of term, I would guess I would just push it between the Dynegy 14-month and the, at 6,993, and the constellation 100% renewable at 7,174.
Yeah.
I think that might be a suggestion.
The term that was presented on the front page of the document was 12 months, not 14.
My apologies. Thank you. Okay, so 12 months, and then we have the three different options. Justice Sinek?
So 12 months, 100% green with the opt-out?
Justice Price?
I think I would go along with the 12 months, 100% opt-out.
Same as, I would, Justice Sinek?
I would prefer the brown, um, I would, personally, I prefer the brown with the opt-in, but I would, um, I would be fine with the 16% giving staff the authorization to set the, uh, the fraction of, uh, dissent difference, um, um, to maintain the, the signage.
Thank you.
I'm going to say 16% with an opt-in or higher.
Thank you.
Uh, 12 months, 100% green.
Thank you. Justice Kenwood?
Here, so, all right, I, I've got another question because I, I'm not sure I follow the 12 versus 14. So I understand that if we go 12, 100% renewable, that is, the constellation has the lowest price. But if our residents are going to opt out, then they go to 710. Is that the way I understand this?
That's correct.
Correct.
So I'm not sure I see that as the best bargain for our community. The best bargain seems to be if I went 14, 100% renewable, my renewable folks are going to be paying a little more. It's, uh, what, one-tenth of a penny, right? But for those that choose to opt out, they're going to be paying significantly less than the 12 on the 13%. And I'm assuming they're also, since 25% is less, it seems across the board, and I, I, maybe I'm not reading this right, but it seems like across the board, I would go 14 because no matter what you decided as a community member, you're going to get the best pricing from debt, from Dynegy uh, across the board, whether you go 100% or all, or all brown. So I would go 14, 100% renewable, opt out in the spirit of continuing our experiment with the idea that the letter is clear, that there's a savings for opting out, and that we capture that data so that next year when we're sitting up here, we're not guessing around the 80%. We have data that says, here's what the community has asked. Does that make sense to any of you?
It does. Perfect sense. Thank you.
Dave, that'd be easy to get data on who opted out, so that's not a problem once we.
And we're all assuming one assumption in, in sending out 7,000 letters, you're going to get, you can basically, if anybody opt out survey-wise, it's 2% probably, very minimal. And, uh, most of people aren't going to read it.
Correct.
So they're not going to even know the option because they now know where they got the letter and they go look and they'll see it's not a bill and they're not going to read it.
Right, are we charged with providing our residents the most green option for everything? Are we, are we charged with providing our residents, um, the, the best pricing for the services that we deliver?
Well, help, help me out because like a previous board decided to go 100% green, right?
Two boards.
So they, so the.
In our environmental commission recommends it.
But I'm, so I'm, I'm going for the historic piece of this, I guess, a little bit. So two, two boards?
I think it's been two boards.
Two different boards or?
Well, there's some carryover there.
Okay, okay, but two different boards decided we're going to go 100% green for some reason. And Pete, I'm assuming you were on that board. Maybe you didn't support that, but what was the, what was the logic?
There weren't all the, the, um, same moving parts and pieces that we have now with, uh, opting in and out of green versus not green. And again, I, I think it, it comes back to, you know, what Gary said is our residents trust that, that we do this stuff and, and don't know any difference, uh, you know, and, and as, um, uh, as David pointed out, that, that the resident response rate is, they don't look, you know? I mean, we, we could, we can do a number of things and our, our residents just don't know about it, so.
And there's no difference between us going to the water commission and buying our water and turning off our wells. It's the same principle. They expected us to get the best rate, you know? Running our wells wasn't the best thing to do. So the same principle, aggregate, get a better price, the board. I, for one, if, if it came down and said, you know, we're opening up, someone has green water to sell, doesn't mean that we, you know, would we do it? I'm not so sure anymore. Right, and I'm mixing apples and oranges, but what I'm saying is, we owe it to the residents to get them the, the best deal regardless if it only is going to cost them a meal at Fire and Water.
I think we owe it to the residents to reflect in our policy decisions what their desires are for the type of community that they want to live in. And for the modest amount of the increase in the cost, I think the, the option that actually John points out is more reflective of what the current and future residents of the community look for relative to the value of their, their dollars.
No one's, we don't know. So maybe what we do is we air on the side of, uh, you're airing on the side that they want it. We could put this question in the community survey.
An excellent idea, by the way.
And get, get it, but I, all we're really arguing is, do they opt in or do they opt out? And I, for one, thinking, having been in marketing research, more people don't read it. I just sent out 2,000 emails and, and I got zero response. So this is the type of, of, you know, I can't think that just because they don't opt back down to brown that they're really paying attention.
For the record, I agree with you. I think you're absolutely correct.
Well, and the other thing is that this will potentially be 12 to 14 months. We haven't decided that part yet. So the promise here is we will all be on this board in 14 more months or 12 more months. Um, and it definitely can be, will be reviewed again. So this is not a long-term decision.
Well, and that's why I was leaning toward continuing the experiment of the previous boards that said, let's go green. And, and, you know, to my point, if, if you have a marketing background, it's really forcing that letter.
I don't think we, whatever we put in that letter is going to get to them to decide to opt in or opt out. And I would air that we got them the best price. That's all from my philosophy.
Mark, did staff, the first time we did this, help with the marketing? And is that something that we can offer that not just rely on the letter, but put it in our quarterly newsletter? Put it on our Facebook, put it on our Twitter feed, our Instagram feed? Maybe we can even make a film and put it on our TV station. But there's other options that we can do and maybe while it's running, um, that we can put it even on our community board out there?
We have had it in our spring newsletters, our Enviro News historically, and I have not heard anything to suggest that our community has been upset about what they've read. We've had it on eBlast. Um, it's been well-promoted through social media. And from what I'm hearing, 3 to 5% have actually opted out for whatever reason, and they have had a choice to opt out historically. I'm, I'm just throwing these things out, Peter, so to the extent that we're concerned about, you know, what kind of result will we get from people who either read or don't read? Historically speaking, as Mr. Kenwood points out, we have had positive responses and I'm not aware of any real negative responses to our efforts.
Because people don't know, Adam, that's the.
But they do know. I've read it.
I guess if I, if I were tapping into your marketing background, right? And what you say makes sense in terms of, you know, how important is this to somebody's daily life? It would, it would seem to me that if our, you know, part of the target audience, or at least part of what everyone talks about is millennials, and it would seem to me that this would help our brand for, to your point, $140,000, $120,000, I forget what you said. That it would, that it does help our brand to be able to keep this certification and this rating. And the way I understand the opt-in program, as you describe it, is by doing that, we automatically lose that.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we can set the level so we keep it.
Well, that's not an option for us now.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Oh, at the 25 and 50?
At 25.
Or we can even go 16, which keeps it. So I would actually say, do it 25 and opt to, uh, 100 because then you still keep it. You still have all the things that everybody wants. You keep it. It's probably not the best rate, you know, it's not as good as green. I mean, you, you could ask, I wouldn't give them then the option to opt down to brown, to brown. I'd say, here's our rate. What?
You wouldn't do the polls.
You, here's your rate, at 25%, you opt in to 100%. We keep our green status. We can then put it in the community survey to see if they want 100% renewable service, but it's going to cost X to the community and then see where it goes. And we'll have two data points, community service, people who opt in. I think you get into, and unfortunately, Adam, it does now become, our goal is maybe a little bit different than, than, uh, the environmental commission, that we have to look at the, the residents as a whole and it's not just doing this. If, if someone was producing more, uh, renewable than versus 4%, and we're just not buying their certificate, I'd, I'd, I'd be more aggressive on this, but I just don't think it's fair to the community. And I think because if we go at 100%, we have now made a political statement. And I, for one, you know, I'm not going to get into that argument. And I don't think it's necessarily for the board to get into that argument.
But I, I think even if we went to the 16 or 25%, we may be able to get a unanimous vote, you know, from the board, uh, which then kind of, you know, would, would make everybody happy, but sometimes that doesn't happen, so.
So can someone help me out with the math here? If we went for the 25% versus the 100%, uh, in my mind, we would, so if we're not giving people options?
You would still give somebody an option.
Uh-huh.
You would still have one option to give, so it would be opt up to 100%.
Okay, so in which case you would stick with the analogy that you stay with Dynegy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're giving me the best price across the board, however, if we did the twenty-five percent with the option to opt up, which are, if we did that, is there, someone can do the math to say, you know, we knew we were saving a homeowner twenty dollars a year by going fixed versus a hundred percent, now that savings goes down to going seven oh one-nine to seven one eight-five? Does anybody can pull out a little ten key and figure that out?
Let's say fifteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen dollars instead of twenty.
Well, it seems like it'd be.
It should be a hundred grand.
Seems like it'd be significantly less than fifteen.
You're.
Eighteen.
At eighteen, it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. It's fifteen.
Fifteen, thanks, Dave.
Good man.
I can guess well.
Hundred and five.
And how long have we had this program in place already, or how many years?
Five years.
Five years, and we've only had that few number of people back out of the hundred percent.
No, no one's backed out of the hundred percent, you had.
They didn't have a choice.
One time, you had to opt in.
Right, right.
You could opt it out, you could opt it out to back to the common rate, which is in essence brown.
Right, but they've never had, they've never had the option to opt down to brown, they've only had the option to opt out of the aggregation.
Right, that's why I think John's proposal makes the most sense in terms of gathering reliable, as reliable as it can be, data for the next round of decisions. Is to see exactly how many people would take the option that you propose.
So if I can try and find a commonality ground here, is, thank you, what I hear most is that this board would like some real data, and really find out what the community would like. Usually, when people want data to make, possibly make changes, they keep the status quo until then. We're talking fourteen months at this point, so it would be next year that we would talk about it, and the pledge would be that we added to community survey, that we help promote the opt-out down to stay within the aggregation program, but opt-down to the basic brown, and that we push it, that staff will pledge to help keep track of that, and that we make a concerted effort to get as much data as possible, and that next year, when this comes before us, we are then presented with data so that we're not making changes until we know truly what the community would like.
Agreed.
I agree.
Well, again, that can be done either way, but by taking this motion, it would be forcing our residents to pay a higher price in order to get that data, which still will be skewed, because people aren't going to read it, or we could opt to, force them to pay a higher price and go buy, you know, what little data we might end up with, or we could give them the best price, and then we could do that research.
And I understand that, but if you're looking for data, then usually you keep the status quo.
Actually, Madam President, I'm not looking for data. I'm looking for us to make the best decision, a policy decision for the residents, not a political decision that I have to be green or this, it's no different than supplying water, it's no different supplying garbage pickup. You know, we have to find the best, what's best for the community and the residents.
Absolutely.
For some people, for some people, twenty dollars, you know, that, probably people on the diocese, it doesn't matter, but there are some people in the community, twenty bucks can mean something, and, and maybe there are not a lot of them, but it still means something, and I think that is what we're really debating. We're not debating, and in my, I'm not debating whether we take away the green status. I think that's fine, but we can do that green status and give the community the green status in a way that's economically beneficial to the community. And putting it another way, and what I said, it's a tax to the community that we are imposing, I would rather, if I had to do this, say it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand, that equals a quarter of a mile of resurfacing that we just voted on. So in essence, we're actually making them pay, I would rather lower it to a green status and then increase our levy a hundred and twenty-six thousand and replay the road too, so we have those balances.
And I understand your points, however, this money does not go to us, so.
I understand that.
And they have the option to opt out, which people do read the letters, because we have people who opt out. And in addition, and I hear you, and I think all your points are valid, as are trustee Ladisax, however, there's four other trustees on this board that disagree, so.
I'm not so sure they disagree, I'm not sure that they were looking and trying to get an objective, a policy objective, that will meet the needs of the community.
Let me just say this, you equate a policy objective as the lowest possible cost.
Not at all.
Well.
Not at all.
Let me just, then, that seems to be where your decision is, which is, the lowest cost is the best policy for our residents. And as I think President McGinley pointed out, this is, this is not a tax the way, for instance, the vehicle sticker would be a tax, because people can opt out of this, so for those who feel that there's a twenty dollars is too much, they have an option, unlike some of our other fees, where they have no such option. So to the degree that, your points, which I share truly, I think there are other opportunities for us to do as you suggest, and to make a policy that would allow taxpayers the opportunity to reduce the overall tax that they have. But here's a circumstance where it is optional, and as President McGinley points out, people can opt out of it, and there are people in the village, as reflective by, I think, the years that we've done this, who feel that this is consistent with what they believe our village should be doing, from a policy perspective. So I think it serves both purposes, what the president is proposing.
Respectively disagree that when the people opted in or opted out, that they were voting on, that they were buying green energy, they were opting into an aggregate.
Well, that's why I think the proposal that's being made to gather the data will answer the question that I think we both have.
Yeah, sorry, just to summarize, you know, for me, if two previous boards, there's a policy direction that they wanted to take, I'd be willing to give that one more year of experimentation with some data. I'd like us to take an active role in that letter, and it needs to be clear that you can get a lower price and save twenty dollars a year if you choose all brown, which is fine, at thirteen percent. And since, you know, hopefully, God willing, we're all here in fourteen months to have that discussion, we look at the data, and I would agree with you, if, if we think that, at the end of the day, this isn't what is being asked because of the data, then I would, I would agree with you.
And we can also ask our Environment Commission to help us in our quest in gathering data, as you are an extension of the village, so that you can help us get real data to come before the board.
Well, with the help of our tremendous staff, our management, we will do the best to do whatever it is that this board asks us to do, absolutely.
That's a huge burden for your trustee liaison.
I would ask that, when you do that, you do that from a, you know, a position of making sure people understand that they can opt out as well as opt in.
Absolutely, I commend you on the effort to see what the statistics might show for us fourteen months from now.
Dave, you said the issue with us asking the question so plainly?
No.
Okay.
All right, trustee Enright, you're the lucky man to make this motion tonight. So, Attorney Matthews, will you help him out? Because it's very, you can't read it like this, right? We are going to make a motion with Dyna-G fourteen.
Fourteen-month contract for one hundred percent renewable.
With an opt-out.
You okay with this, then?
I think so.
Okay, go ahead and try.
All right. I make a motion to authorize the village manager to execute contract documents with the electric aggregation energy supplier, based upon the board's proposal for fourteen months of one hundred percent renewable energy.
From Dyna-G?
From Dyna-G. With the option to opt out to the brown.
And input into the letter to make that clear.
And input that into the letter to make it clear.
Seconded.
Thank you, trustee Senek made, seconded the motion, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Senek?
Aye.
Trustee Fasulis?
No.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Ladisax?
No.
Trustee Pride?
Aye.
Thank you, motion has passed. Okay, that was a very good discussion, and I'm really looking forward to the next time this comes before us with some data, and then we're able to really address it, what our community is asking for. Moving on to item I, reminders, manager France?
Yes, we've got a special village board workshop scheduled for Monday, June 5th, at seven PM in room three oh one of the Glen Allen Civic Center. A special village board workshop is scheduled for Monday, June 12th, at six PM in room three oh one of the Glen Allen Civic Center. And then a special village board meeting, scheduled for Monday, June 12th, at seven thirty, notice the new time, seven thirty, right here in the Gallican Boardroom. And then, just a programming note, the village board workshop scheduled for June 19th has been canceled.
Thank you, are there any, is there any other business?
I just, the calendar invites for the June 12th, seven thirty PM start will be updated.
Yes, it will be.
Thank you.
Two other quick things, the newly-elected officials workshop that they're offering through the DuPage's Mayor's and Managers is an excellent event to go to, if you could take some time. If you haven't gone, you could still go as well, but it's an excellent learning experience for newly-elected officials, so.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 trustee Senek is doing this one.
A motion to, Madam President, I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation without returning to open session area.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Kenwood made the second, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Ladisax?
Yes.
Trustee Pride?
Aye.
Trustee Senek?
Aye.
Great, thank you, we are adjourned to executive session.
I changed the bill.
Change the bill, yeah, and how about shirt size?